Alright, we'll call our Committee of the Whole to order at six o'clock P M. The town of Culvers is located in traditional Blackfoot Confederacy territory. We honor the Blackfoot people and their traditional ways of knowing and caring for this land as well as all indigenous peoples to help shape and continue to strengthen our community. Just moving right into the adoption of the agenda, so we do have it in front of us, is there any anyone opposed to the agenda as presented?
Yes, I could have two small additions.
Sure.
On the agenda, one would be letters of support and that's F C S S as well as Green Acres Foundation. And then upcoming professional development opportunity.
Okay, so maybe we can put that under other business. Remind me again, letter of support for F C S S?
Yeah, it's probably for Green Acres Foundation. We have two requests, right Nate, we've passed.
So the letter of support for F C S S, that's seven point one, letter of support for Green Acres? And then.
Upcoming professional development.
Okay, seven point three?
Thank you.
Um alright. So.
I was gonna ask, can we change the branding and website conversations? It's a lot of way we're talking about the website after the presentation, so that probably have an effect on that, so it'd be like five point two to five point three.
Sure. Yep. Okay, so let me change that around. Okay, so we've got a couple of additions and amendments here, so can we just have a motion for those?
Yeah, I move the agenda as amended.
Okay. Any discussion? Call question, all is a favor. That's Carrie, thank you. Alright, so with us today, we're so excited that we have Ridge Regional C P O Services with us. And we've got C P O Todd Nelson, who will be kind of walking us through this and we're excited to learn more about this. So I'm just going to turn it right over to you and I believe that Carly can put through your presentation here and yeah.
Absolutely. And I thank the council for inviting us for this presentation. I do apologize for Sergeant Bondi, he actually has a family emergency, Minnesota he's out of town. And he'll be out of town till about the night. Ridge Regional, we can just go to the next, if we know the next slide, we'll just start with that one. Ridge Regional Public Safety Services Commission, as called R R P S S C, just for a short form of that. Currently offers full-time peace officers service on regional level to provide enhanced patrol coverage and biolabor enforcement more effective than municipal municipalities to provide wonderful peace, Ridge Regional Public Safety Services, peace officers are overseen and governed by the commission. We go to the next one now. So here, as part of the commission, this will be the responsibility of the commission as you can see here. It was formed and it's it's kind of interesting because it's the first commission for peace officers from the province. And it happened in twenty twenty and we're very proud of that. Ridge Regional has has accidental leader in a couple of areas, such as this and a couple of other areas that we've had historically. But is the authorized employer of Ridge Regional Public Safety of the officers. Commission consists of elected officials, so we have one elected official sitting on the commission at all times. And they oversee everything on that, as you can see, oversee the Ridge Regional. As the commission establishes a budget, organization, policies and procedures, and they meet quarterly for as needed. Each member has equal vote and sets the their own priority, which is fantastic. That's the key point right there, is that if you're on it, you have equal vote. It doesn't matter what your population is, right, you have equal vote. And then on top of that, which I love, is you set your own priorities for your own community. We have some communities that put a priority on trainers and we have some that are like, no. We have some that say act upon unsightly, be proactive or reactive. So they, oh, you set your own priorities, which I which I really enjoy. We have a list in our office of priorities of different towns and villages. And we go through that and you can set your own, which is like what I said, which is fantastic, I set those priorities. We go to the next one. We got a, yeah, we're okay. So here are here are some of the departments that we have. The commission consists of County Warren, Town Raymond, the town of Culver, the village of Sterling and the village of Warren. Right now our clients are Carson County and also Hill Springs. These, I have been a peace officer for ten years. And I've seen it, I've seen it grow. And I I I love being in every community. Every community there is within my county and I enjoy being in those. I'm a hometown, I'm a hometown boy, I'm Sterling, which has been very interesting. Because I get to go to the other communities, which were used to be my rivals in high school. When I, oh yeah, I remember Utah, I'm like, that's Officer Nelson. But it's it's been fantastic that I get to go and be part of every community. I think it's important that that we reconnect our community to our own community. And this gives me the opportunity to to work on that. So those are just the commission members and some of our clients.
Can I, can I ask, do you prefer questions at the end or?
Oh, yeah, it doesn't matter to me, I'm easy.
If you have a question, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. What's the difference between a a member and a client?
That would actually go down to your budget finances.
Okay.
That being said, if you're a client and you still get, you still get the full authorities of the commission. For example, if we go back to, those things, I think, those things is on there. I was actually down in Hill Springs, probably two weeks ago. Had to deal on an unsighting, which again, the same, what we do is we educate, do a weekly education. And then if needs be, then we go in different direction, being citations or being whatever. But education, but like I said, I was down in, yeah, actually Hill Springs, yeah. And they get the same authority, the same, the same, okay, we don't know. Services, that's.
Is it just a number of hours then?
Yeah, yeah, basically, and it's, I won't be, I won't be able to talk about budget or what it's costing. That would be up to you, that is probably way above my pay grade on that one, that would be a sergeant or a bond on that one. So, yeah. And and here, you know, like I spent, we had a, we had a horrendous dog attack in Milk River on Monday. I was down there and I thought I had to be taken to the left bridge animal clinic and I actually, on my way here, I had to stop and to do an investigation on top of that. So you know, like, you have the whole service as a clients. So the benefits of it, here we are, right here. The Sergeant C P O receives the management, the day-to-day operations, scheduling, administration supervision. We have a fantastic sergeant right now, we always have had one. Open door policy, quite knowledgeable on the law and procedures and everything else, which has been a fantastic addition to to Ridge Regional. He oversees all all reports, completes all reporting requirements to the Solicitor General. So that, there has to be one report that goes to Solicitor General per year. And that's the service, which eliminates, if you're a, if you're a client, that eliminates your C A O doing that, which frees up a huge amount of time. And all this is just a benefit of it to eliminate, or you see, it says frees up town and officials for administration supervision. And the C A O would have direct contact with Sergeant Bondi, where Sergeant is at that time. And that, once again, they set the priorities of your community. And, you know, consistent funding and monthly requisitions and budgeting. That's just powerful, of course. Ridge Regional is operated out of Raymond detachment, which is kind of pretty interesting. There's a lot of places that are operating out of, out of other detachments. A lot of them have a, have a wall between them. Ours is, I'm right in the bullpen with the officers at all times. So they all come to me and they'll say, hey, you know, we have a biolabor situation or we have a person, you know, or do you know this individual? Can we help that name, can we have a great communication? Which doesn't happen too often, as we have that division. But where we at now, we have had a great, great rapport with the R C M P out there. Operations out of there, so cost sharing across the entire region. Once again, we're talking about budgeting, which you would have to talk to Sergeant Bondi about, her budgeting and so forth. And once again, reduce the administration, training and operational costs. Once again, if we go back to, what's the difference of service, we still get the same service, you get the same authorities even as a client, and we're in the area of our commission. Oh yes. So this is, we have just gone to a seven day coverage. After about nine years, we finally went to a seven day coverage. We just started that beginning of September. And I was the first one to experience that, so it was quite, quite interesting for me. Yeah. We get to see a lot, a lot of individuals coming up about, you know, seizure. And we do a lot of, I think we talked a little bit about parks recs. On that seven day coverage, especially on a Sunday, I take the opportunity to go up to all the campsites and visit with everybody out there. And they're quite surprised and they have, I have a great rapport with everybody. But yeah, we do have seven day covers now, and that means that there's two offices online at all times now. So there's not one officer on duty, there's actually two. Not meaning that we're riding in the same car, but we actually have that. Once again, we talked about full peace officer services, provincial and municipal enforcement, unsightly premises, animal control, traffic education. Kind of provides school resources and community education. We do a bicrilo, we are also involved in, I do senior citizens. And I talk a lot about scams, grandparenting right now, huge. So I take the opportunity and I go and present that. We are on several, the other municipal enforcement association we're on also. So we have, we have a lot of, a lot of resources and community, community is where it's at. Your community is important, your community supports you, your community supports me. And that's what makes a fantastic community, right? Everybody just taking time out for everybody and just helping out. Ridge Regional bicrilo is a increased uniform presence in our communities. We know that that as we have more presence in our communities, our crime rate goes down. Hence, once again, we are out seven days a week with two officers. Which roadway and infrastructure enforcement, basically that's just traffic. We do a lot of things way out of the county, we deal with pivots, which are notorious to destroy infrastructures. We do a lot of education on that one. And we drive them out, we drive out there and we have a lot of, we talk to a lot of farmers and a lot of heritage colonies and so we're out there. And so your, your, your infrastructure needs to be looked after. And once again, the community engagement, education, warnings, letters, verbal warnings, enforcement, targeted enforcement on main highways. The, the target, the target traffic enforcement on main highways, we have a great relationship with Vulcan. And so Vulcan will pull us up and say, hey, we're, we're running on a project on hundred four. We've got truckers wanting by us at hundred ten, they're not slowing down, we're worried about our employees. Can you come up there and do an enforcement or our control? And we absolutely do, we absolutely do, the safety is first. Education, you know, it's important because some people don't know what some of the biolabs are. You know, and you know, I run into a lot of people saying, I didn't know that, I didn't know that. And you know, when you start talking to them, they don't. And so that's where our education comes in. After education, if, for example, we have an unsightly, we do a lot of education, we do a lot of visiting. And the warning is, comes into the letter, letter says, you have an unsightly premises, can you please have it cleaned up by thirty days? Or whatever your bylaw says. Some of our bylaws say that you have fourteen days to appeal that, so we usually give them fourteen days plus another two weeks, because council doesn't mean everything. After that, I think we can talk verbal about warnings, and then we go into enforcement. Alright. That is, that would be a budget, budget slide. And hopefully that you come around full time. I don't know the hourly rate, honestly, hourly rate right there, I don't really know too much about that, that must be a a commission or a Rospon or a Sergeant Rospon. Alright, so questions for you?
Well, we've got questions from council. Okay, go ahead.
So I just, here's, what is the main way to get in touch, like, so if a president has a concern in Raymond or wherever, how do you get in touch with the police officer?
We have a direct number to it and we actually have an answering, answering service on that. Also, the officer, whatever officer is on, that is directed straight to him. What ends up happening, it has to go through three phones. It goes through our, through the the main one, and then nobody picks up, I think it's three rings on that one. Then it goes to the sergeant's desk, and if the sergeant's not in there, then it'll go to whoever's on call, whoever's working. So sometimes that takes, you know, like, nine rings. And we tell people, just be patient, leave a message, leave a message, we'll get back to you within twenty-four hours.
And and I guess as this follows to that, so if someone's like, oh, I have like a, you know, there's a dog running a arch or I need, I need someone to come pick it up. And you're busy with something else, is that, does that, does that happen at all, like, do you have to be in?
Oh, I can't, oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Or you're, or you're in Milk River or something, and they're all the way there.
Oh yeah, and I, I have, like, I have gone from Milk River to Raymond, to pick it up, Raymond to Milk River to pick a dog up, and then back and forth. We have, you have to prioritize depending on what you're doing. If I'm on a horrific, like, just like a weekend, we had a horrific dog attack, dog, you know, I have to deal with that situation compared to a dog that, yeah, you know what, I picked this dog up, he's in my backyard, he's enjoying it. Let me deal with, let me deal with this priority first, absolutely, I will come to your house, I will pick that dog up, do whatever I can on that. That being said, we have a, if your dog is registered with the towns and it has its tag on, we just go to our computer and we look it up and it gets a preview to go on the first time around. Once again, that's education. But if it's continuous, I'm continuous or habitual, then we go through a different route.
Yeah, I understand that. I have some more, but I'll make my others.
Sure, council call though.
Oh, thank you. So if you were looking at expanding in this area, if we were looking some early river communities, because I think we provide services for, is it just one or is it two communities at the time, right now? With two others, yeah. So if we were looking at expanding in this area, would you continue to hold Raymond as your primary location that everybody sort of, you know, that houses them that they come from? Or would you explore the idea of sort of a north of the river location?
Kind of like a, like a media, like media satellite, satellite office.
Satellite office, something like that, yeah.
I mean, that's, that's an option. That, once again, that would be a commission, it would be a commission or a sergeant's decision on that one.
Yeah. I would hope that if we were sort of that, that entrance into this neighborhood, to start picking up on the communities, that we might consider that's that satellite, that satellite office.
Oh, you got, I, you know what I would enjoy, I would enjoy having an office in here.
Wouldn't that be fun, it would say you've.
This, this, this far from, this far from, like, it took me a while, you know, like, I had to come to the left bridge and I, I don't drive left bridge commuter traffic too often. But it, it took me a while, I was surprised how much traffic was, was out in Cabo, I mean, you got your, you got your left foot, yeah. And there's always those options, there's always those options.
Go back to you, bye.
Thank you. Do you foresee any issues with the distance of Culvers being so far from Raymond when it comes to coverage?
I personally don't. But once again, that would be a commission or a Rospon or a Sergeant Bondi question. And that, you, you would have to, you came on, you'd have, I know you have, you have one C P O with you right now. One, and you, we would probably have to get another one to do that, I don't know, obviously, I don't know. When we first started, we did Raymond and McGrath. And then we kind of, we kind of subcontracted to the other areas. And and now we have complete coverage in those areas. I have, I have, like, I know that can be, I know that can be worked out. I have a free spirit about things and I'll drive anywhere you want, right, just, you know. Once again, it will come down to priorities.
Other questions? I know that you've got some, go ahead.
Yeah, so how do, do you, for reporting, I mean, it's back to our town council or each of these counties, do you, do you have like statistics on them, like, these are the things we endorse, these are the things that.
I, I think they do, once again, you, you have that option as a commission, as a commission member on that, I'm quite sure you do. Because I know he does, I know he does a quarterly report, so that would have to be there, right, yeah.
And then. Yeah, I guess, I know, when I looked up your website, it just comes, it's coming soon, that's something, you guys are working on that, I guess.
Sorry.
The website.
Yeah. Well, thank you. I'm looking at a little dinosaur who has a hard time even running the remote. We, we, they are working on it. I know one of the officers, Brayden, our officer friends is working on that, so yeah, they are working.
Well, I'll just, I'll just skip one there.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I really appreciate the fact that communities can prioritize.
Yes.
I love the idea that it seems more about relationship and education rather than sort of punitive piece, although that's necessary. But I guess my question is, what is your relationship like working with the R C M P, have you ever, do you call them in occasionally or do you just rely on each other for backup then?
No, occasionally, there are, there are, there are some places that, that we need. Like, we have a great, like I said, we have a great relationship with the R C P in Raymond and Culver. So if we ever, if we ever need them, then I can call. For, you know, like, for this dog attack, this dog attack, was a dog on a dog attack, the R C P called us and say, hey, listen, this is what's happening. What are we, what can we do or what can you do? So we went down there and just did our little investigation, gave the individuals some direction from there. So we do have, we have a great, great picture on that.
I suspect it would be the same in this area, they're great, the R C M P in this area. And they love knowing that we have alternative, you know, alternatives to come into our communities, right?
Absolutely.
I, I have just a question regarding like the priority setting. And again, this might be more of a, a question with the commission, but how is that done? Is that like something that's done annually, like, what does that actually look like in terms of, of meeting with council to set those priorities and then to have like ongoing conversations?
Okay, so my understanding is that council would elect a, or assign a member of the commission.
Okay.
And it would come through, come through that, that individual on the.
Okay, okay, that makes sense, great. Other questions from anybody? Um, I guess I just have one last question. And so when, when people are assigned to the different communities, does it, does it rotate based off of like, who's kind of on shift that, that day? So we would have different people within the community at different times?
Uh, yeah, because you have different employees, right?
Well, I mean, yeah, yeah.
Because you have, because you have individuals off, right? You know, like, I'm on right now in Brayden, I'm C P O dentist is on, off right now.
Yeah.
And and right now, given the situation with Sergeant Bondi out of town, so we just kind of rotate that through. So, yeah, you have different individuals, but you know, your community is small. Communities, and they know, they know the officers and the officers get to know them. So I, I wouldn't worry too much about that.
It's nice to have more than one.
Yeah.
Because once they start to build relationships, it becomes a little harder. And then people get their hurt feelings when, when they, they see warnings, right? Oh yeah. They take their hurt feelings all over Facebook. That's a very habit.
So, um, is there anything else from council, administrations?
I, I guess just like your propensity, so you, you feel like you have the capacity to take on more?
I do, I, I honestly, deep down, think we would have that.
So your, your systems and your structures are all in place, it would just be a question of bringing on new, like hiring on new, if you were to take on a few more communities, kind of, right?
Yeah, we have, right now, we have three peace officers and one biolabor officer. And he was actually our summer student, our biolabor officer was our summer student up here in the building. He's done, he's done a fantastic job, fantastic job, so. Yeah, so we have four that, that we rotate around. I guess there's always two of us on at a time, except for tonight. Once again, for a long time.
I think, I remember when you guys first started, Kathy Nita was on the commission.
Yeah, yeah, she was.
She was, and she kept bragging incessantly about all the wonderful work you guys were doing, so it's nice to see it growing and expand.
It's, it's been, it's been, I guess I've been a peace officer for ten years now. I love going, I love going to work. Some days I love it more than others, but I still like, I still love going to work. I, I love getting out with communities, I enjoy talking to people. Sometimes I talk a little too much, but I just enjoy, and I think communities are, I think our communities are important. You know, our youth are important, so are our revenue. And that's, you know, that's, that's our substantial areas that we want to, to, you know, right? Because that's going to be our, here's our generation, I was raised by my grandparents, love. I love them to death and I think we owe them quite a bit to make sure our communities thrive. And I think we owe our, our youth the same, right?
Yeah, it's good, it's good to have those relationships, absolutely. Particularly in our schools.
Yeah.
Hopefully they'll think twice before they engage in something that's, you know, vandalism or something. If they, if they remember something to base them after their mind, right?
Yes, alright, well, thank you so much, we really appreciate your presentation. It was great to learn more about the commission and the work that you do. And so I'm sure that I'm switching, we'll be in touch with someone, yes.
Thank you very much, and I look forward to it, and I look, I enjoy working with John, I've worked with John a couple times, just a project officer. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret, thank you. Alright, so we'll move right into our report, so the first one that we have is the community aesthetic. So this was something that we had discussed at a previous council meeting with the, the recommend, or the motion to come to Committee of the Whole. And so maybe what I'll do is, you have the information in front of you, I will just go to council to see if there's any questions on the information that has been provided.
Do we, I guess, I love this, I think it's really cool, I love the idea of the thirties. There is some really neat, like dirty thirties and cool stuff that we can build from that. But do we have sort of like this? It seems to me that you have a vision of what. It it seems to me that you have a vision of what that might look like, like building this kind of aesthetic. Is it is it just every year we sort of put a budget line item in and just start you know, putting up signage and things in our parks? And are we looking at perhaps engaging some of our businesses and providing subsidies, but or? All of it?
Take you through the mirror to transfer Caldwell. Um excellent question. Um one of the reasons why we're bringing this forward to council for consideration is um this aesthetic and public space design actually intertwines with so many different elements of the town. So it will help uh be kind of a a guiding star to how we make decisions in all areas of the town. Uh for example, uh if we have upcoming park projects, we could consider um what that could look like with a park bench, land post, and easy posts. Um going forward, um as noted, there's also a tenure plan. So as we're working on the projects or as council directs, we could also look at what main streets look like or provide incentives for other businesses. It's really going to be a long kind of approach to start creating a new um community feel. Um with that being said as well, uh the following two reports too would be linked to this. So in the whole approach, we want somebody who comes to the town physically. That feeling is also going to match what they see visually online. And with our communications and our other branding. So as you'll see in the report, there are some excellent um examples provided by Miss Henning on how other communities have really grasped this concept. So we can see, you know, everybody knows, you know, Ken Moore really well. Their website and the visual elements all kind of match this entire rustic mountain feel. So it just sets the tone for all of the decisions that we'll be making going forward across the whole entire board. And provides a foundation for creativity. And I think in over the years, um we'd really be able to find more ways to embrace something like this as we go. But it's like a little guiding guiding star for the town as we go forward. Um and I'll just pass this off to you to Director Henning as well. If you'd like to add anything.
Sure, absolutely. I I think the the key things that you see in other communities who have used uh a specific aesthetic is is really those um municipal owned assets. So especially like your walk on signage and uh your wayfinding and that sort of thing. So if you do have um one of the things that council of course has talked about, uh whether it be in the heart of the community or near the wetlands, having specific developments. Um where you're looking at trying to create tangible gathering spaces. And so you can do that with a specific type of design or aesthetic um in some key elements. And it doesn't necessarily mean that houses have to be built in that that same form or anything like that. But a lot of times you'll see in these communities that that will be um organically adopted. Um and so and and at the same time, council of course can um put in some uh designer building standards for if we had like a a walkable pedestrian area for a downtown area or or something like that. So the the sky's the limit and it can be as as subtle as you'd like or it can be as bold as you'd like depending on uh what sort of statement you'd like to make across the community as well.
Other questions?
Well, I I guess I guess I'm just uh so we're just looking for council's fire.
So at this point, um these were intentionally presented to council as information reports rather than an R F D. So that council can have a fulsome discussion but also be talking from the same playbook. So that we all have context. Um and then depending on what council would like to do, uh especially as it relates to the branding discussion and the website discussion, um then the recommendation that I would have is to have administration bring back natural R F D uh with more defined parameters and and budget and sources pending and that sort of thing. Um and we we totally want council to lead the discussion and see where we want to go. And then we can bring forth uh the more formal documents as needed.
Yes, go ahead. I may add to that, Mayor Montilla. Uh just for today's uh meeting as well, it would be helpful to have a recommendation to a council meeting on dif on the direction of of this. So if this is something that council thinks is worthwhile going down, then we can bring that back uh following the recommendation. If council would like to go in another direction, that would be helpful as well if they want additional research or something like that too. So at this point, um it's really um about an endorsement so we can kickstart a lot of that project work. And start refining um some of the council's asks uh in the government's realm for council. So regarding uh budget and and the community as a whole, which is why it's here today, is that this is a very big community impact piece that we wanted to bring the power along with. Uh but also have council um to be part of that because you do represent the community as well.
So I have to say, I I love this idea and I love like I know this is something that we talked a lot about as a whole. Um just like what is our identity and what are we what are we what is what is this thing? And so I love this idea that there is significance behind the reason as to why this has been chosen. It's not just because we like whatever. Um there's something that goes along with it and it also I think really grounds um decisions that are being made moving forward. So whether you know like with the wetlands, we know that there's wetlands attached to the committee. But like now if we take take this kind of design focus and put this lens on it that can determine things like benches and things like that, um without things just becoming kind of like we'll just buy this bench this time and maybe we'll buy this bench next time. I think it it gives that that whole aesthetic um feeling that we're trying to create within the community and it's being done so intentionally. Um and I and I kind of think too that like there like like you mentioned that there's you can start we can start small and build this out as time goes on in a sense that like maybe maybe the the signage in in the wetlands or whatever is the first sign that's done in this style or something like that. And then as the years go on, maybe there is grants or subsidies for businesses to kind of do that. I know that when Coldale went through their like all of their kind of stuff, it it seemed like there was like this momentum where all of a sudden the businesses on that on that main street kind of just like jumped on and started doing it. And so I I really like this idea and I really like where this is going. And I think it's um honoring the history but not being so tied to just the coal mine component. It's much more about the community and and the um the families that were here at that point in time. And I think really honoring that. Um and and like similar to like what you've shown here for like Fort McLeod and and the other ones. I think it's something that that we really just embrace. And we say like this is this is what this looks like. I kind of look at this, I guess, kind of the same way I look at a brand book, right? In a in a sense to say like these are this is generally what this feels like and looks like. And these are the kind of the options or the that would be selected for this rather than just a we'll do a blue light post here and a pink one here or something like that, right? And it gives it some continuity. So that that's my thing. I very much support this and I would love to see this um move forward. So that was my long winded response to what my thoughts are. So love to hear your thoughts too. Go ahead.
Um I was really happy to see this come forward. I think that having a coherent vision for the identity of the town is something that's key. And I think like Paris C E O had mentioned that we're in a position where we can make small impacts now that'll fit that greater going forward instead of just kind of having multicolored Lego blocks all over the place with different different components and different colors here and there. So I'm happy to see that come forward. When I was thinking about this, um my initial thoughts for the nineteen thirties are fine. I don't know if that was kind of the style I was thinking in my head, but I the more I thought about it, the more I was like it's a real good way to honor our history and um kind of recognize where the town was at before the disaster struck, right? Not necessarily keeping it above the mind, but just like the vibrancy of the town and all the things that they had up there. And just kind of remembering that part of the history, the community, the families, the people that built this town. Um so the more I thought about it, the more I'm in support of that kind of nineteen thirty five in that sense. Um I would love to see what this would look like going forward with a full R F D. And then just kind of see how that can all play together. Um I realize that it might take some time and it might seem a little bit out of place at first, but I think, you know, if we're talking bold strategies for the future, this is one of them that really helps create that identity and that uniqueness that is gonna draw people to the community.
Pastor Caldwell? Uh you know what? I I love this. I have some mixed feelings though. I think we would have to navigate this quite carefully. Because nineteen thirty five was a brutal time, right? With my disaster, we had a lot of leave people leaving town. Uh we also had a lot of people abandoning their farms. Like it was sort of the dirty thirties, right? There was like huge droughts. There was like, you know, the heat weeps where people were dying. You know, the people who left town, I don't know where they went and what happened to them because they're, you know, there wasn't food and they had money for, you know what I mean? So I I don't know if we have a really strong if we have really strong messaging around it about, you know, like strength and growth from, you know, or resiliency, you know what I mean, from disaster or something. Because I mean, I love the, you know, I love the like the opportunities that the thirties present for us in terms of branding the town and creating. I mean, I'm picturing like a little speakeasy and you know, I mean, like, you know, those kinds of things. Like I love all that kind of stuff. But then in this area, it's not a good story nineteen thirty five, right? And the thirties, you know, they've been. So how would we be able to tell the story in a way that makes it positive, right? That's just you know, like honoring our honoring our pioneers, right? Honoring, you know, their struggles.
I would mention that Chris has somebody who is correct.
I bet you do. I bet you do. I bet you do, but we have to be loud about that because otherwise we're gonna get drowned out by all the oh what, you know, blah blah blah. You know, all the negative nellings from that. Well, but I mean, you know, all the negative from that time.
Yeah, absolutely. Through the mayor uh to council. It it's always about the story and what we're intending to do here is to develop the story of the community, right? Um and not just looking from the lens of of the community and the people who are here, but also an economic development lens. Trying to draw investment into the community, trying to draw visitors to the community. And and trying to to bring people back because people were coming in the thirties. It was was continually growing at that time. And when I had looked back in in the history books and and looked at coal earth histories, I was preparing uh this memo as well. Um it talked about, you know, the the community had become established to a point but was still growing. And there is so much going on. Um and when um C E O beverage brought up this idea originally, it was really about um you know, there's so much um that we we find that the discussion, the the fulcrum of that is about the explosion of the mine and the culture of the mine rather than what was happening prior to that. All the good things, the community, the sellers, the the families who are here and were had established this very strong thriving community. And so it's it's about sharing that story and and celebrating the the people who are here and had done that.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Councilor Coltrier?
Um I I think I think what's missing for me is like, yeah, like a mood board or something like that, like what is it, right? That's really what's missing for me right now. Um because whether or not, yeah, I like the look of it or not, it's probably the main thing to kind of think about.
Mm-hmm.
Um because, yeah, that was a good example. And I I do like, yeah, I really like the idea because it, yeah, because it's stopped giving some cultures and history. Um and uh you know, gives a cohesive feel. Um I I am a bit torn, of course, because, you know, because I'm building. So I am torn about like telling somebody to do their building that way, like if if the town is doing a new building and they need to hire an architect, we do it. Yeah, we want this style of building. Um uh how heavy do we push it, I guess? Uh which is fine. I get I've certainly worked for people like that, like Town of Coldell, their building is a perfect example. It's that we want an old building and a new building. So so we said an old building and a new building and they're attached together, right? So it's like, yeah, fair enough. But um yeah. I yeah, I guess that's where I I'd be curious where we ended there. So um yeah, so I'm in support of this this for me further. And uh I really I I do like the idea of that cohesive yeah, but also I still I still want there to be room for uniqueness in each park and uh you know, yeah, we're we're a theme, but we're still we still have uh variety and and of course, I think part of that will come like, you know, if say the new commercial area comes on board and they want to adopt a theme, well, they're gonna try to do it their own way and and for example, and hopefully that kind of um helps build it up and give it more character. Because I don't, as much as I, you know, some people I know really love oh, this community looks the same. I actually am the opposite. I like the more eclectic diversity. Uh in my opinion, because it gives community more flavor. Maybe that's busy or um but but busy, but I think it just I think it speaks, I think what it speaks to me is about is if you've set um I don't wanna like hit on Sundance, but like Sundance has a lot of similar houses and it speaks to a mass repetitive mass production of suburbia to me rather than uh a place-based care that that someone might have who's built it from up there. That's that's how I feel about the same uh themes, I guess, let's say. So as long as there's care and attention to it and it's not just like a mass production thing, like we're using this bench and we'll make this bench. Like that was how that we could have a bunch of benches, we could have whatever. As many as you want, as long as they're falling empty. So.
That's fair enough with the I guess that I was viewing it and and that it would just be for like for public amenities, right? Like it we could dive into that realm of like of like looking at like the home builders and and the things like that. But I would I guess I was viewing it to say like, how do we as a town of wherever putting public stuff in consider these types of things that we can have like sort of like the variety of 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 benches that that it could be or whatever that is, it still kind of has that feel. Um but I but I do agree with you. I do like um I do like um diversity too. Um but I just wonder that if if this is created kind of from the public side of things, it could still mean that the other parts can be a little bit different too. It just ties the municipality together, I suppose. Um yeah.
Uh thank you, Mia. Um so actually, C E O beverage, if you could just scroll down to page, yeah, four and five there. Um so there are some examples of uh what this looks like in other communities. And actually, there's the the name of the community is escaping the C E O better train, remember? Um but they're actually known for their art deco, uh the public buildings and and the style that they have in in that community specifically. But uh what was I gonna say about this? Oh, so so these are some examples. But if you go down to the last page there, you can see some examples of um some of the signage that's on buildings as well as some potential fonts that you could use within an actual branding, which will be the the next discussion. Um and the great thing about art deco and art nouveau is that throughout that decade, there were so many different interpretations of that. So it doesn't have to be just one thing that's repeated over and over again and really becomes kind of sterile within the community. It can all have its own little spin and twist and and it can feel like different parts of the community but still be cohesive. So there's absolutely um an opportunity to to have flair in different ways depending on on how this this style is being used throughout the community.
But I guess the thing that like when you talk about that is it's it's the intentionality behind it, right? Whereas I think right now, like if we were to have a park or whatever, we just it's just kind of like whatever. I I don't really know how we decide on those types of things. But but I think that this brings that intentionality to to the community to make it cohesive in some way or another.
Yeah.
Um I just wanted to address one that you had said, uh Councilor Caldwell too, just about like the story. And I think that I think that that's a piece of it, but but the way that that um like as we build up that story, I think part of it too is like that resiliency of, right? So like
Yeah.
the great things from before, but then the resiliency of the community and what's happened since. Um as well as that idea of like and and I mean, you're gonna talk a little bit about this, about honoring those people um that were part of that and actually having like a permanent something to to actually commemorate the situation.
Yeah. I'm shocked we don't. I'm shocked we don't after our conversations.
Yeah.
I'm shocked we don't have those sixteen names somewhere in our community. Why, right?
So I guess like so I guess in a lot of ways, like we're we're building this, like you said, we're building the story as we go along while also honoring the situation, but look, I think it's more that spin too, right? About the positive things that are happening within the community.
Yeah.
Um so that was just my thought on that.
And and can also be modernized in a way, right?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have to be stark. If if there's a more of a modern twist to the nineteen thirties that we wanna do, we we have opportunity to do to do that to make it still feel fresh, you know, and very welcoming.
I guess it's changing a little bit. Artkeeper, I can learn a little, but.
You like Artico?
Ilsois. Il Se Wa by Le Corbusier is a very masterpiece. And that was nineteen thirty one.
Okay, well, you know, I mean, we need to do our own. We don't have to follow some of the really nasty, spazzy city stuff. Like Art Deco in the big cities is very different than Art Deco in small communities, right?
Yeah, I just wasn't thrilled about the example energy there.
But it, but I guess, I just have a question on this then. So if we were to kind of go with this type of a style or this whatever, um how does this usually happen? Would this just be something that we would pull together? Is there like a professional, the similar, the way that like somebody does branding? Like what, how, how does this, how would this happen?
No. Uh thank you, Mayor, really good. Yeah, I think, um like I said, I alluded to before, um it's really gonna take some time to build, developing blocks and every single piece. But what this does do is allows administration to make quick decisions based off of this. So when we're having conversations with contractors, like before we start going down um certain projects, for example, we can mention, this is something that um our council and the community found, so we're looking to incorporate. It helps us make budget decisions as well, um as we're going forward. Um and because this isn't something that we're looking to achieve uh next year, um as different situations come up, we'll be bringing it back to council as we go along, depending on where a decision needs to be made. Um where those discussions can be had. So really, it's a never-ending conversation, I think, for the years to come, really. Um for the foreseeable future, uh between the administration and council about um building that community id- identity together and with the community. Uh for example, when listening to upcoming reports, um there are, there is opportunity for community engagement as well on a lot of these projects to hear what they have to say too. So it's not necessarily something that just, it will be, like we will, we will hear, we will, we will incorporate the community um as part of this. So um they have ownership in their identity as well. So it's meant to be the council, administration, and community project in the long run.
That's great.
I know we, we did some visioning, um and I can't remember the group that came down and worked with us and we thought we were looking at our um M D P and which, but we had some really valuable lessons from that. And I know that what came out of that was just this, this wish for sort of this, this theme of small community and uh ease of small-town life. And I mean, I was sort of saying that, that vibe of the fifties, but when you look into family structures and family life, like not saying that's what we want, but just saying the, the simplicity, the ease, that feeling, right? Of simplicity and ease would be um, as long as we keep it as a small town, right? Small-town vibe. So the lights, standards and stuff really feel like small-town vibes, right? Like all of that kind of stuff. Am I, do you think that I'm encapsulating a little bit of our conversations on that day? When we pull that into this branding conversation?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. I guess like, for me though, I think that like that very much just felt like that we were trying to pull something up somewhere to just have something, right? Like because we're like, what is, what is this?
Yeah.
Whereas for me, like, um because surrounded is something, to me it feels, feels better, I guess, in some ways, right? And so like, I would love to see what this would look like on a, on all scales. But you're right, I think that like in having that kind of that small-town vibe type of thing too. But like, one of the things that I think about this as well is like, when you mentioned economic development, right? Like if we're, if we're really kind of embracing this, maybe we do get somebody that wants to come and have a speakeasy out here. Maybe we get, do get somebody that wants to, you know, have like a this, this might not happen, but, but have a theater similar to the Empress or something like that, like, and I think it kind of pulls back some of that nostalgia stuff, or maybe they could find more of that, that um niche here than maybe they would in a leopard strip mall.
You know, we definitely have the space for someone wanting to put in an old-fashioned outdoor theater. You know, the drive-in theaters? Oh my gosh, wouldn't that be brilliant, something like that, right?
So I think it kind of, it plays on that nostalgia, right? Which is something that I think that people are really wanting right now, is that homey feel and that, that type of thing. Um that would carve out a potential niche for us, I think, in terms of that, um while giving us that identity. Some of it can be flashy, right? Maybe some of it is really beautiful and flashy and some of it's a little bit more muted and a little bit more whatever. But it's all wrapped up within this thing too. And I think as we go about replacing components or things, we would just continually add them in. And so that, at the end of the day, it becomes this big thing that makes sense. Ta-da.
But I, and I, I do, I, I love, because we are on the cusp of doing some really great developments and, and it's nice to have a, a clear vision going into them. So that we can share that with our developers to say, you know, this is where our branding, you know, it would be, you know, it would be good if you could go along with this, right? And it would be a win-win for them as well. You know, if they're in a trapped part of the town, they draw people in, right? Yeah, 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 I, I like this. I like this. I like this because we, it allows us to tell the story, like you said, that really celebrates our pioneers and really celebrates the resilience of our community, but it also gives the opportunity for us to honor the people. Um, you know, that, you know, that really sort of worked in those mines and didn't survive the mine blast and, you know, their families. I won't forget going to that fire damp play where some of the ancestors came from, like, there were some people that came over from Europe to, to watch that play because that was their ancestors in that mine disaster. And so um and that's, that's very, very cool, right?
Yeah. Um is there any more thoughts on this? Um or I, I, I heard Deputy Mayor say that you'd like to see this go forward for an R F D. Um did you wanna make a recommendation, motion, recommendation thing? I don't know how to do that. Mm-hmm.
Sure.
Okay.
Perfect.
Mm-hmm. Alright.
Words right now, huh?
There we go.
So maybe we can put that, uh, why don't we put that creative or recommend that council endorse in order nineteen thirties community aesthetic, public design and identity as per the report provided by administration and bring that forward to council as an R F D in the near future. Great.
Uh, any questions on the motion itself? Um alright, would you like to speak to this at all?
Um I think we've had a pretty good discussion on it, but I'm just excited to see what this could look like. And I think that it's the idea of having an identity that stands out is really being interesting, so. Before we see what comes back.
Thank you. Um would anybody else like to speak to this?
I think, I think I agree with Councilor Ackerman, or sorry, Deputy Mayor Ackerman. Um uh but a meaningful identity, something that we can all uh connect with, is something that is, it's gonna be great.
Um I just wanna, I just wanna speak to this and I guess this is in terms of this, but with all of this, all the rest of the things that we'll be talking about today. I think that um for myself, I'm very much in support of this because I think that as we've gone along, we've been really trying to establish what this community is and how it feels and to bring, um we've, we've worked a lot since the beginning of our term in terms of like building a more professional brand, in terms of the way that we put out information and the way that we, just the way that we do things, we're building more structures and things like that in place. And I really believe that as part of this significant transformation that we've gone through, um more so internally at this point in time, we've seen a lot of the changes, I think that this really displays us to the world in a lot of place, in a lot of ways, and says like, this is who we are, this is what we stand for. And so for all of these things, um while, while they could be seen as not need to have, um in some ways, I kind of look at this as like this reemergence of, that like we've, we've really kind of got to this place of, of this transformation and we're kind of coming out of this it's a renewal type of thing. And so I think that this is the first step of it, of really figuring out what this looks like and then um moving forward with embracing more of what that brand identity is for. So thank you for breaking this door.
I appreciate it.
Um so with that, would you like to close at all?
Not at all.
Okay. Um so Deputy Mayor has made his motion. I will call the question. All those in favor? That is carried. So with this, we'll now move on to the Colhurst branding. Um and I, I'm going to just start out with, maybe what I'll, I'll start with is um just getting our administration to, to highlight anything that you'd like to talk about within, um within the report. And then we'll get some questions from council kind of over there.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor Montina. Um so thank you very much for that endorsement from council. We're very excited to move forward on um incorporating nineteen thirties into so many things. Um the ideas just keep flowing and we're thrilled to bring all those things back to you and other community. On that note, um that endorsement does help with the town branding uh discussion as well. Uh because with that endorsement now, we can talk about what is our tone and uh potential new logo. So with that, I will hand this off to our Director of Community Development. Ms Hemmy to, uh, to talk more about branding.
Thank you so much, C O beverage. So um the, I, I think the the biggest key when it talks, when we're talking about branding, is that branding is much more than a logo and tagline. It really is about um the whole being of an organization or a community and, and looking at what is that personality? Uh how does that brand speak? Uh what does that look like in corporate communication? What does that look like in marketing and advertising? What does it look like in our, our regular, everyday internal and external communication? Um if the, the brand is a person, how does that uh person show up within digital spaces? Whether that's through your website or through your social media pages? Uh how do you have those very regular interactions with uh the public, your residents, with your visitors, with your businesses? And also with those, again, through the economic development lens, your potential investors? How are you drawing people into the community? Um so there's really uh three key pieces to it. One is the overall brand, uh the brand positioning, which um as C O beverage talked about, for the North Star of the community, looking at the aesthetic piece. Um if you want to look at your brand positioning to say, this is who we are, this is what makes us unique. Here's what we offer, that you can't get five kilometers down the road, fifty kilometers down the road uh in the next problem server. This is who we are. Um but brand voice is also a really key point. Um because that is that personality and that tone and the language that's used. Um and so there's a really good example of one fridge polytechnic to talk about who is that person? If you showed up uh next to them in a meeting or, or you met them uh in a grocery store, how would they talk and, and what does that look like? What do they say, but also what don't they say? How do they not show up in those spaces? Um so that it makes it really clear, not just from the corporate communications perspective, but for all of our staff uh to understand how we're communicating with folks. Um of course, all of this uh initially comes into play through the digital space, through your website primarily. And that's why that's the next discussion that we've brought forward. Um but then again, like I said, it's, it's also in how you communicate through all of your corporate documentation, your business documentation. Um and letters to the community and, and that sort of thing.
Um so we'll go to council and see if you've got any questions. Go ahead.
Um yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. Like it's something that I asked for when I first joined. I was like, look, sorry, I'm just too mature, like, I don't know. Um did, I was just curious, uh in terms of resources, is that something that, uh you feel comfortable taking on? Or is that something that graphic design expertise support?
Uh through the mayor, to council. So this is not my professional expertise. The, the development of the brand is not my professional expertise. Uh this is something that I would highly recommend contracting a creative agency to complete the process of this. Um of course, in concert with our staff and, and from the administration and how we lead the project. Um and we would be consulting community members, we'd be consulting uh council, we'd be consulting staff to make sure that we get the brand right. Uh I have seen brands be launched and go south very quickly. And so you do want to make sure that you do have a strong community engagement component. Um just to make sure that we hit the market and we don't shock our community. We want to make sure that they're well aware, that they're involved, that they have a voice at the table and they know that they've been heard. Because the brand is to represent the community at large as well. And it's uh what we hope people will take out to friends and family and, and visitors of their own and be proud of and, and want to share uh on a greater scale. Um so I would recommend uh using a, a contractor to do it. But of course, would, would be guiding project internally as well. And so that's where um the cost comes in. Um so when you're looking at that ten to sixteen thousand dollars, uh that was from uh based on four different hooks that I received from both local and non-local service providers. Um within that, uh there's a couple of uh companies that I talked to where they do have the ability to do both web development and branding. Um it's, it doesn't mean that you get a reduced rate on one or the other because their web development costs are their web development costs and their branding costs are their branding costs. Um and so you do have an option to use a single provider for both. Um but I think that it's also smart to look at who does web development very well, who does branding very well? Maybe the same provider, maybe different providers, um just depends on, on what you're looking for within that service. But that was the range that almost all of them provided.
Thank you. Um other questions? Yes, no?
Thank you. Uh when I'm looking at the grants that are available, I know the website grant also mentioned that fifty percent coverage. Is there a maximum on that grant application?
Through the mayor, to council. So the great thing about that particular grant is we would not hit the maximum. You'd be looking at a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh the minimum is, uh it has to be a twenty thousand dollar project. And so they would pay up to ten in that case. Um and so if council decides to go forth with the brand, I know that council wants to do the website. Um but if council decides to do branding as well, then the recommendation would be uh that we come forth with an R F D that combines website and branding together for a cost up to X. Um and then we can take that total amount and apply for the grant and, and specifically, specifically through an economic development lens, uh to say, you know, this is establishing a community as this identity for the purpose of drawing investment, whether that's through residential or through business or through uh tourism. Um and there are some communities within the last few years that have received us for these specific projects for branding and websites. And so I think that we have a very good chance, never guaranteed. Uh so we would need to make sure that we have the funds available regardless. Um but we, in, in my opinion and in my read of the previous applications, I think we have a very strong case to me. Um but that we would present them together.
Yeah, when I initially looked at the price tag on this, it was kind of like, I guess it caught me off guard, but I realized that things are more expensive than I always think they should be. But at the same time, I really see that as an investment, uh no different than marketing, marketing your municipality too, right? So it's like if you go through the branding or website, it's just creating an attractive place for people to be, right? Businesses, individuals, that sort of thing. So although it does seem like a lot, I definitely see it as something where you're not gonna get a direct return on your investment, but it's definitely could be the tipping point for a business to come choose Colhurst versus another cool town.
Well, I, I think that, I think that that's a good point though, in terms of like the marketing component of this, right? Because we're looking at really developing our own, like our own owned media, rather than looking at that earned media side of things and potentially bring money in, into that. So we're really building out the core of what we're establishing that, right? Before we kind of go out and do those other things. And I think that that's really important because you can spend a ton of money on marketing in general, but um why not to do it, do it well from our, from where we're at too? Cause if we're constantly, when you go back to the website or the whatever, we want it to be attractive and match everything so that people know what experience they would get coming here. Um and I, I would say that the current brand and website doesn't articulate what the town is actually about. Um and so that's why for me, like this is just, it's, it's really important um to consider this.
We, we would have to be really, really involved with that team so that they could really, I mean, I think we all have a sense, we have a feeling of what it should be. Um you know, when you bring someone in, they've got the uh, you know, they have the skill sets. But how, we have to get that vision to them.
Absolutely.
Um is there any more questions on this?
If I could, I just have a a quick question, like just sort of this overarching thing, if I could, please. So you've looked at our centennial hundred year celebration, right? From, what was it, nineteen thirteen to two thousand thirteen? Like we like our history is on our website, and two thousand thirteen, we had a big centennial celebration. And there was sort of, I I don't know if I see it printed anywhere, that it was a hundred years of being a town, incorporated as a town. So if we go and say we're thirty years incorporated as a town, how do we message that? Right? Because I know there was a lot of conversation, but what happened was it was incorporated and then it lost its incorporation. And then it regained it, I guess, thirty years, nineteen ninety-five was when it regained it. And so the the committee determined they wanted to do this centennial celebration, so it just went from the original incorporation. Just, you know what, we're just gonna do it anyways. So like, how do we, you know, navigate that kind of?
And then you through the mayor, to council Colville, excellent question, is definitely something we've been thinking about as well in terms of messaging. All of these complex things that makes Colhurst part of the town. Colhurst, Colhurst. And we do have thirty years of town coming up here. And part of those celebrations throughout the throughout the year, we are looking at incorporating events that help tell the story of Colhurst. So over the next year, part of the messaging with those events and how we're celebrating the thirty years of the town will also include that it actually the town's been around for so much longer, and this is the history. And this is where we are today. And we also want to honor the nineteen thirties. So it just will blend in, the launching of branding, the launching of identity, and the launching of of the history and the storytelling as well. So we would love to work with historians and also start building out some of those pieces. And we'll be working on those communications plans, so the public will really start to learn about all of that throughout an entire year of honoring Colhurst for thirty years of the town.
I think one of the really cool things too is that, because this is Christie's area of expertise in terms of storytelling, is that like branding might not be your thing, but the storytelling and incorporating and all of that stuff is. And so she really has the ability to really shape what this looks like, to to educate and bring people along with it too. But we but we need that visual identity to match that as well. And so I think that with the people that we have on our on our internal team, I think we're well ahead to do a really, really good job of all of this. Did you ask me anything, Mayor?
No.
Nope.
I I guess if we are saying we're celebrating our history of volunteerism as well, nineteen ninety-five is is a great year to start looking at. We probably still have a number of volunteers around from that time, right? I mean, it all ties in really brilliantly.
I I would like to make this motion that community as a whole recommend that council endorse an administrative brand new project and for administration to present a budget for branding at the twenty twenty-five budget deliberations. Is there any question on the motion? I won't speak to this anymore, like I said, I think this is, I think that this is part of the next step of of where we're moving as a whole. And I'm I'm really excited about this and the the potential that can come from this. I have so many things buzzing in my head right now around what this could look like in terms of events, communications, the way we engage people, all that stuff. So I'm really excited about this and what this could look like. Would anybody else like to speak to this? So I've made the motion, so with that, I will call a question, all those in favor? That's carried. So with that, we'll move on to the Colhurst website. We'll go with the same um the same way that we did this before. I'll turn this over to the administration to provide any highlights that you'd like, and then we'll go to council for our discussion.
Well, hopefully Mayor Montana, I will just pass this right on over to our expert here, our Director of Community Development.
Thank you very much, CEO Vedrich. So for this one, really what it comes down to is three different choices. Like, we know that council does want to do a new website, that we we have that very clear direction. And now it's a matter of what approach do we use? And really, there's three different types of approaches that we could do. The first one is a fully templated site, which is it it's what we have currently. It wouldn't be WordPress necessarily, but when I talk about template, I mean that the the code is on a set base. And so we have limited options in how we customize pages or features or or functions for the user. And then the second option would be a hybrid, where you can use the the template from a base website, but take it off that base code, so that you can add in some customizable features. And that hybrid option, it allows you down the road, if you need to make some changes. Let's say, for example, right now Alberta does not have legislation around accessibility standards when it comes to digital communication. And so in Canada, the the standard really is out of the province of Ontario, where they own it. If Alberta were to bring in accessibility standards and our website wasn't able to meet those standards, we may not be able to upgrade our website to a point of being able to introduce those accessibility standards. Whereas in a hybrid situation, you do still have some customization ability when it comes to hard coding the website. And so you can make simple changes, or maybe, you know, a number of years from now, we say we want to totally redesign the homepage and make it look fresh and different and and so it appears refreshed, but without a total redesign. You have the ability to do that. Previously, in in my former role in Vernon, we did come up against this a couple of times. It was a a fully customized site, but there were a few things that came up as we went along. It was a a rather old site that we were trying to make a little bit more user friendly and and we're getting requests from the public related to functionality and how they can find information and submit service requests and that sort of thing. And it was because we had those customization features available that we were able to very easily implement those changes. So the hybrid is the second option, and then, of course, full customization is the third option, where you are starting from scratch and you are completely making it your own. So there's no hindrance when it comes to branding, there's no hindrance when it comes to functionality. You can, sky's the limit, you can do what you want. We do not recommend the custom design route, it is very costly. The recommendation would either be to do the template or the hybrid. And my professional recommendation honestly would be to go with the hybrid route. The one thing I wanted to point out, and I understand it can be a little bit confusing when you're looking at the estimated costs, you might say, well, why is there two sets of costs? The reason for that is we did talk to a number of service providers, just so we could get an appropriate range. So we were giving council accurate numbers as to what we would most likely be looking at if you do go these routes. And the one service provider, they have a a cost model where you pay very little upfront to have the website developed, but you pay that exact same amount year over year over year for servicing. The other model is where you pay more upfront for the development of the website, but your annual servicing and hosting costs are significantly less. So that's why there's the the two different figures when when you're looking at the estimated cost. With it didn't really seem accurate to say it might be between sixteen and twenty-three thousand dollars, or sorry, six and twenty-three thousand dollars when your annual servicing would be six thousand year over year versus three thousand year over year. The other thing that I should say, and and I, this was a complete oversight by myself, and so I apologize for it. The annual servicing for the sort of more expensive upfront but cheaper annual servicing fees, you're actually looking closer to probably about a cap of thirty-four, thirty-five hundred. And that's because of being able to integrate an email subscription service, so we can send out news releases and event updates and emergency related information updates and that sort of thing. I forgot to calculate in what that email service would be. So it's about four to five hundred dollars for you.
That's great.
Thank you.
Um, we'll go to council for questions. Go ahead.
Do we know what the current costs for our website are at the moment?
If you want to ask it a professional, pull it up.
Okay, that's good. I guess we can just speak to this a little bit, I like the idea of the hybrid one. I know there's talk about a town app and website. I believe when we were originally looking at this, there's something that came up after one of the dimensions, and one of the things that I saw at the dimensions was there is a company called Boop that did kind of a municipal website, partnered with a municipal app. I know that we have a municipal app that is very unutilized. So I'm thinking the cost savings, if we were to cancel that app, would likely cancel the cost of the annual service for a website. So it would just be kind of what we'd be looking at to get that website upfront and running. I think if there is the opportunity to have a grant where we're having fifty percent of that cost recovered, I think going with the method of having more of the development costs and then having the lower annual service costs is the way to go, especially if we can offset that with revenue that's already going over for the town app. But I was I was happy to see that with this option of the hybrid, it would be able to be refreshed periodically, so that if we're looking at future website changes, we're not going through this whole process. It could be brought up to date of the the idea of being able to handle things like accessibility. I think that that would be huge. I know originally I was one of the ones that was kind of pushing for this. One of the things that I just felt the current website was missing was it was very tough for people to find the information that they're looking for. So how this looks at the end of the day, I really don't care, I'm sure you guys will do a fantastic job, but it's just that user user experience, right? If somebody can go on there and say, hey, I want to find your community standards by law, or I don't want control by law, or I have a complaint, or who do I talk to about this, or what's going on in the community? If they can find that stuff really easily, that is fantastic in my books, and that's kind of what I'd be looking to get out of this whole process.
I want to answer the first question. Seriously, Mayor to council. So previously, we had Code Red, which was the emergency alert system, which was about thirty-three hundred dollars a year. I believe that was thirty-three hundred US. Our website is about nine hundred dollars a year for hosting, and then the app that we currently have, forty-four hundred, so a total of eighty-six hundred is what we were paying for those three features. As you noted within the report, we don't recommend having an app developed. It's a unnecessary cost, in in my professional opinion, simply because websites are being developed to be mobile friendly. And so if people are having to submit a form for a service request, or if there's a a bylaw complaint, or looking for information on news releases and that sort of thing, of community events, those are things that would be housed in an app, it's not the whole website. You can use all of those functions through the the web version of the app, or the mobile version of the app, or of the website, rather, and you have access to the entire website and not just portions of. When I was talking with one service provider, we had this discussion at length, and they actually said to me that they're starting to have clients really shy away from having an app developed in addition to their website, because there's actually a lot of manual work that's done on the backend by that contractor, by that service provider, because they have to keep them up to date with the various app stores. But also every time a new mobile device is launched, they have to do updates to that code. And so making sure that people are also keeping their apps up to date and doing the refreshes. Personally, I I've had experience in another community where folks just their apps weren't being updated and they weren't getting the information. They go to the website and it's all browser based and all the information is there and is up to date. So it would be a a significant cost savings.
Thank you. If I can just add on to that, one of the things that I've noticed some websites have is the PWA web app, where you can, it's a progressive web app, where you can almost go to a website and then you can install it as an application on your phone. So if that was something that was available through like a hybrid website option, I think that that would be good to share with the community that you can install it as an app, if people want to just be able to click and go right there.
And and most Apple devices will let you just disable websites on your your screen anyway, so, absolutely.
Good, uh, council Colville.
I think it's great for me, our website, if you water page, I guess.
For sure.
People, recently, people judge places based on their websites, like I judge the peace officer.
I I did this once.
So if you don't have some professional material out there, it can it contains some, it's been great. So I I also really like the idea of helping people find what they're looking for. And I'm not sure if the hybrid option goes far enough, in my opinion. Can we integrate AI into that?
Through the mayor to council, a conversation I would have with service providers, absolutely.
Yeah, because I, because we don't have, like in big cities, certainly do this, but I I think flip on the other side, if you're like, you know, you don't have staff to answer questions all the time, so maybe someone just search it up with the help of an AI bot, maybe, maybe that will help us better hold service. So why not just keep going into the future, so.
Yeah, that's great. Um, any other questions on this? I'm excited, actually, for this, like I think we've been waiting for a website for, the original motion was twenty twenty-two. Yeah, so this is exciting to see it, hopefully moving forward. So without any more, I'd like to make a recommendation, um, this.
I'll make that recommendation. Um, I will move that the committee of the whole recommend that council request for administration to present a revised budget as per option two, the hybrid website approach regarding a new website for the town at the twenty twenty-five budget deliberations.
Woo-hoo. Here we go. Any questions on the motion? Would you like to speak to this at all?
No, I'm just to reiterate what you said, it's really grateful that that it's been taken care of now. And I really do appreciate your recommendation for option two.
All right, would anybody else like to speak to this? If not, so council Colville's made a motion, I will call a question, all those in favor? That is carried. Excellent. So we just have a couple of other items here, going into other business, seven point one. Council Colville, you wanted to have a letter of support for FCSS.
Yes, if I could, please. And I'm not sure where we are with that, but we had received a sort of a a project overview from FCSS, I'm gonna say early September. And we we, I believe we made a motion in council at that time to to support it, but I know that we were having a lot of chaos during that time. Have we have we sent them that letter of support?
Do you believe? Yes, 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 yes.
Okay, because I was having a conversation with Zach, but that would have been, I think, last week, early last week, or something like that, where he was saying he hadn't heard just yet, he was gonna say he could reach out to you.
Oh, okay. Yes, absolutely, thank you for the question, council Colville. We have provided that letter on time to meet their deadlines. So yes, they do have that, and that is a letter that was provided by Mayor Montana to, on behalf of council of the town, to support the project.
Fantastic, oh, good, thank you so much, no problem.
All right, anything else for that one? We're all good? Okay, let's go to letter of support for Green Acres.
Thank you. Had we already made a previous motion to send a letter of support for the, this is a letter of support for the the project, seeking funding, right? And so we had made that motion.
I believe this was, came out via email to us?
Yeah, and then we just received the email today about it, asking about it. But have we not had conversation in council on that?
Oh, I I.
But not move forward a motion, is that? I guess my question is, I'll just, my question is, do we require a motion in order to supply that letter of support?
Yeah, um, thank you, council Colville. Typically, letter of supports are approved by either a committee or council as a whole. So typically, they don't require a motion of counsel, but just general consensus that the council whole support it. When we receive any request for support for a letter from anybody in the public, it is typically on behalf of the mayor and half of the town. So we will provide that to you via any email to confirm that everybody is okay with that type of support. We will draft that letter as well for circulation. And then when council is happy with the letter, then we will send it off, so.
Oh, perfect, sure, thank you. So in in this kind of instance, where they're asking for funding for a project here, would it be wise, and perhaps it might be wise, just to make a motion? Because sometimes. Because sometimes, uh, provincial funders want to see, do they want to see a motion attached to a letter? I know in the past I've seen it, I, not often, but maybe just in the event that they require it. I would like to make that motion then, just in case.
For most cases when, um, if there's an application or if there's a project, um, if it's a provincial project or a different type of project, it'll be a request for, uh, a council resolution to be included as part of the letter.
Okay.
So that will be a direct, um, ask that must be included in light of support, that is a requirement. Um, so.
But it's, it's not a bad idea to show a partnership, right? I know that in conversations when we were up at other meetings, um, and this was not specific to Green Acres, it was specific to something else. And they said, we always want to see, we always want to see you indicate your willingness to partner, right? And so anything that we can do to do that then, I suppose, right?
So with this, are you, so because we are in pretty of the whole?
Yeah, I'd like to make a recommendation to council that we, um, that we do, um, promote that.
Will will that leave the timeline though, I guess, is what is what?
When, when do we have to? Well, we've, we've done it retroactively, right?
But I was like, so this like, if we were to make a recommendation to council to, that would go at our next council meeting, which is on the fifteenth, is that enough time for their le- for their time of the letter?
Is this for them?
When were they asking to have it?
A while. Is it a face email?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Just. Back to.
To this. Where are those date? There doesn't look like there's any date, um, that I can see.
Required. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. Okay.
So I guess I, I guess, and I'm just wondering, like, I I can appreciate what you're saying about having the motion there, but if we go to the motion route, we're gonna have to wait to the next council meeting?
Yeah.
Or if we had consensus amongst council now, we could send the letter and support now?
Do you know what? I think if we just move forward with it and then if it's required, we can just make the motions to effect, right?
Okay.
Because we, um, like with our, with the current government that we have in place, I think there being a little more rigorous about, um, ensuring that those partnerships are in place. That was a sensor I got when during the, um, when I was speaking with, um, um, God, I'm trying to remember his name, Minister of Education as well as, um, uh, Mcgiver.
Okay. So with that then, um, if we follow that process where council can respond, um, to the email just for that that consensus, then that would be good for that to get that that moment? Yes, I remember?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah?
Alright.
Excellent.
Thank you. Um.
And then you had seven point three upcoming professional development.
Yeah, so I was invited by the Old Men Watership Council to take part in a leadership conference that was occurring this weekend. And I was wondering, we, we, do we have a set budget for professional development for council members? We had that conversation and I, you know, honestly, I've never taken advantage of it, so I wasn't very familiar with what that looked like. Is the process that we still require, um, council, uh, approval to move forward with it? Wonderful.
Um, can you remind me what our, do you remember what our our individual budgets are per year? I ask this all the time, so I always forget.
I have a little bit of a head cold and I think that's why everything feels just a little bit harder. I know, I I, it goes, Wayne comes back and it goes, Wayne comes back. I'm so sorry, Scott. I should, I have a little barrier between us.
Uh, do you believe, uh, professional development budgets were around?
About two dollars. Feel like it was.
Yeah, I can follow up with council on your expense.
Okay. And that's, that was specific for per diem, right?
It's it's for your entire professional development for the year. So that that would in the mood, if you wanted to sign up for any courses regarding your role, um, online webinars, things like that as well. Um, in that budget as well, we accounted for, uh, yearly conference attendance too. So, um, which is a conversation that we also typically have at our organizational meeting of council, every year at the end of October. Um, but we'd be happy, um, to provide council with an update on those expenses so far. That would be helpful for each member, we could do that.
Actually just found how much was, I found Mike's email from the last time I asked. Um, so per year, we have, uh, twelve hundred and fifty dollars, but it's rolled over each year until the end of the term. So if you didn't use it, you can can, you can use it bigger.
Yeah.
Wonderful.
So there you go.
Well, I have my registration paid for for this and so it's basically just a, that's per diem. It's in the branch. Bunch of conscious. And I'm gonna be learning some great stuff on design thinking and inclusion diversity, equity, you know, and such.
Are you doing my session? Yes, I am.
Right?
I know.
As well as team building, like lots of, there's some really great, you know, it's not the same old board governance kind of stuff. Although that is absolutely valuable information to have, like, but I love it when it gets really creative.
That's awesome.
I know, I'll I'll sit in the very back and and quite a cherry one.
Oh, no, no, it's gonna be interactive. Get ready.
Well, I was, I was gonna say quite a heckle you. I'm gonna say those words.
Alright, so that is all the, um, business that we have tonight. Um, look, we could get over this early. Um, so I am going to adjourn the meeting at seven thirty, six AM.